Is installing this product better than doing nothing? Perhaps in the case of open lawn, but when you have a 75-year-old oak tree that absorbs a lot of water out of the ground, and you have to lose that tree to put the extra 5% coverage patio in, I might argue that this is not necessarily better. You might be displacing more water into the air with the tree than you are storing in the ground with this, maybe.
Good point. Impervious concrete, though, is one of the only materials that is allowed to be installed under the drip line of trees.
Assuming the tree stays, absolutely.
Right.
Right. I just wanted to get you.
You can use this product right up to a tree. Tree lovers love it. Getting back to the contractor's certification, I would like to see a certified contractor or qualified individual. You know, there are concrete contractors out there that are going to be very good at this, and they've been doing concrete for years, but they're not going to go to the class. They're not going to get certified. They're going to learn how to do it, but they may not get certified. So if we could add qualified individuals as deemed by us, I guess.
That puts a lot of onus on you. I mean, if staff is willing to take that, I guess for lack of a better word, risk, I'm willing to give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alderman, Police was next in line.
The extra 5%. If you put this in the UDO, so now I'm the developer, I come in, I buy the house, old house, fix her up where I want to tear it down, whatnot. I can shrink the driveway now using impervious surface and make a bigger foundation for the houses, because that's what's going to start happening. So we're going to, because right now they're using 30, what's it, 35% lot coverage?
Correct.
So we're going to go to 40% lot coverage. So what used to be maybe a deck is now going to be solid concrete, right?
Correct. The way to handle that would be to make a lot coverage percentage for buildings only, the way other communities have.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Are we still going to leave the house, you know, basically the foundation of the house at the certain percentage, and this extra 5% would only be, because basically now they got 35%. So are we going to make it 30% for the footprint of the house, and then the 5 and 5 for the foundation, I mean, for the patios and driveways?
Well, that's why my initial thoughts in bringing this forward was to deal more with existing situations. If we have, if we restrict this permeable product to a side yard or a rear yard, you know, that would give us, I think, a little bit of control on that. You know, we could even put another restriction there and say, I mean, see, again, this brings up a whole world of questions. Big picture, would we want somebody to put their entire concrete driveway in, in permeable concrete? For stormwater management purposes, it makes a lot of sense to do that. But, you know, again, I was looking more specifically to try and address a reoccurring situation that we have over and over and over again with existing structures that are at or exceed their maximum lot coverage.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, but somebody's going to come in, buy some of these smaller homes, you know, when the market turns around, a few years, whatever. I can make a bigger house, I use some impervious concrete. Next thing you know, you know, some of those decks are no longer decks. Bottom line is, I'm the developer, I'm looking to make as much money as I can. I'm going to play with the numbers and I'll get around to your little deal, right?
Well, my initial thought was to only allow it for a sidewalk or patio or your RV, you know, parking spot in your rear yard. If we wanted to restrict it to specific uses, that might be one way to address that.
And the other thing is, you just mentioned the sidewalks. So what's the base on this? I think I heard out in the lobby there was 6-inch base. It has to be correct, certain type of base.
6 and 4, so you're going to be 10 to 12 inches for your excavation.
And our sidewalks right now are?
4 and 4.
4 and 4. So if the city wanted to step up a little bit when we're putting in these new sidewalks, should we be switching to this stuff? Is this stuff going to last as long as the normal sidewalks now?
Personally, I think it would probably be a good idea to do it, some test sections of sidewalks. But again, this, we're getting away, I mean, that's bigger picture. Yeah, I think this deserves some serious discussion at a later date. But, you know, again, as you can see with the permeable concrete out there, the finish is not the same as, you know, the impermeable concrete. It doesn't have that same, you know, tabletop smooth finish to it. So whether it would be desirable for sidewalks or not, you know, I think it would make sense to try it in a couple of locations, see how it holds up.
I mean, I like the idea, but I'd like to see how the ordinance is going to be written, because, you know, I just want to see where all the loopholes are going to be. And I know the developers are going to be looking for them.
The sidewalk point, if you really wanted to make an impact on runoff, that would be a lot more of an impact than regulating people's backyards and patios. That would be a big, that would be a big-picture impact on runoff. Getting back to the percentages, you know, as I said earlier, Wooddale is quite restrictive on their lot coverage. I get a lot of feedback from residents, and, you know, when you tell them that 65% of their property they can't do anything with as far as cover it, that's a little bit of a hot issue.
Alderman, Police, follow-up?
Get to follow up with that. When it rains like it did last night, I get a lot of feedback saying, "What are you going to do for me? My backyard's flooding, this is flooding." And I think the council has about $4.5 million worth of projects that, you know, supposedly we should get done to stop just certain areas. And we're only talking about three, four specific areas. We don't even, it's not even a tenth of the city, so, I mean, we can go back and forth on that one. And not to, you know, I'm sure you're getting, believe me, I'm a landowner, I want to build as much as I can, but...
Well, like I said earlier, this does retain, this does hold water. Alderman Shockey, you're next.
Thank you. As the liaison for the Stormwater Committee, I think I have a little bit more of an insight into what's going on in Wooddale and this area. And it's very disturbing to hear from residents that come in and beg and cry about helping them because their yards have water in it, and sometimes even the basements. Now, this isn't restricted, it's just part of town. Ord 3, nobody hears about the flooding there, but we, because the swales have been filled in, people do have basement flooding, just like everybody else in town. So we have restrictions in Wooddale, and they're there for a reason. We only have so much top dirt, and then we've got clay, and it's flat, and there's no place for this water to go. So if we're going to be doing anything like this, I think we need to be very, very restrictive of it, at least to start. And when you mentioned about reoccurring requests from these people, maybe that's the time where we should allow an additional 5% paving blocks that are permeable, not concrete. I looked at that sample outside there, and I would not want a sidewalk in my house to have that surface. You know, a child is going to go out there barefoot, and they'll tear up the bottom of their feet. It's really, really rough. One of the questions I might have is, if somebody puts in the sidewalk like that and they find it so rough, are they going to take sand and continue to put sand on it to try and level it, to make it smoother? And then you're going to destroy the permeability product, the effect of it. When you're talking about these things, you're talking about not just permeable concrete, you're talking about the base. You're talking about at least 6 inches of, what, gravel?
Right.
That has to be done correctly. I mean, you can take and just cut out a sidewalk and put in permeable, and so the sidewalk's going to hold just that much water, and the rest of it's going to flow out anyway because there's no place else to go for it. You've got to have that base. So I think when people come in and ask for a patio, to be able to tell them, yes, you can, using permeable material, blocks, or whatever they call these different shapes, but it has to also have at least 8 inches of the gravel underneath it, and done so that we can see that it's being done correctly, so we don't continue to add to this flooding problem. Mr. Alderman, Police talked about three or four places. You know, we heard that one engineer a while back say, "If we had 20 million bucks and we tried to solve all this flooding problems in Wooddale, we couldn't do it. It would take more than 20 million dollars. It's that bad." So I would go along with this, except for the addition, for the time being, that it be the 5%, but that it be permeable blocks put above a base of at least 8 inches of gravel, and see how that works for a while before we even think about doing any driveways or solid sidewalks or anything else. We need to have some experience with this. You know, like you say, people go out and they do it on Saturday or Sunday. If they've got a permeable sidewalk, what are they going to do on a Saturday or Sunday? They'll find a way to go out and get some latex and put it over there so that it destroys the permeability. They'll do all kinds of things. You know, you hear about this all the time, and we don't really like to talk about it. We've got good citizens in Wooddale, but darn it, they do it anyway. So I think if we use your recommendations, but just for the time being, at least, use blocks or bricks or something, and allow them, or tell them, they have to have 8 inches or whatever it is. We have to know the material they're buying so that it is permeable, and as long as we can check it. We're giving them an out so they don't go out and pour concrete, you know, on a Saturday or Sunday. At least we give them some, all the alternative, a legal alternative. But we've got to make sure we don't increase the flooding any more than it is, because we're going to have to live with that for the rest of our lives, everybody in Wooddale. There's never going to be a no-flooding problem. It's always going to be flooding. There's always a, matter of fact, you and I had a conversation about backyards, and you said that we used to have a restriction in our ordinance that you could not bother the city unless that water was there for 72 hours after the rain had stopped, for the backyard. We have people coming in and crying because of backyard floods, not the basement, just the backyard. So I think we even need to go that bit further and put that back into the ordinance, so we don't have these, what I call almost crank calls, that you and John have to run out to and take a look at, and take your time up from some more important, serious problems, and not be playing with this stuff with backyards anymore. I just, I don't like to hear people crying, I really don't. But, you know, your sympathy just goes so far, and we cannot correct the whole town flooding. We can't do the whole town, never can. So blocks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Shockey. Alderman Coles, you had your hand up quite some time ago. Are you still, would you just like to make a comment, or?
No, I decided, I'd only get in trouble, so I don't want to say that.
Very wise. All right, and then Alderman, Roy Wesley, you had your hand up a while ago, too?
Well, I won't be that wise.
You never are.
People pay a lot of money for their houses, and they're not able to use their property at their full capacity as they want to in today's market. And I was looking more of a 10%, what I talked to John about earlier, and, but I would like, I could see us going towards a 5%. If the council wouldn't want to go at 5%, that's fine, but I would like to do a review of this in another year for an expansion, to see how it works, and possibly go to 10% if it's working out well. So just to go from there. Thanks.
Okay, there's, uh-oh, Mr. Mayor.
First comment, you have a lengthy agenda, you spent an hour talking about the first two items on the agenda, but we'll let that one slide. But this seems like an appropriate point on the agenda, just for information. Due to the rainfall event, the reservoir was opened at 4 o'clock today, and the plan is to run it through the night. The county is hoping that they can hold the floodwaters exactly where they are right now. So that's the intent there. And just one comment, I would think that since this is preventing runoff, you would want to consider doing it for the front driveways as well. Less stormwater runoff is a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Shockey?
You mentioned there were, there was a lot of rain last night. What did Wooddale actually get in rain, do you know? O'Hare figures, less than an inch, or what?
I had, one resident wrote me that there was 5 and 1/2, but apparently that was up north. I think we had about 2 inches. But as the chief and I were talking about earlier today, it's amazing, small rain events, what the damage it's occurring in Wooddale the last 2, 3, 4 years.
But I think the suburbs north of us got much more rain than we did, and I think that's where we're getting the Salt Creek flooding. I don't think it's been, the rain we had here, if left alone, I don't think would have been a problem, even if it was up to 2 inches, except for the backyards, which are nuisance things.
Okay, we covered a lot of information here tonight. One thing that I'm still convinced I want to see, so I'm going to look for a consensus from the council. I do want this as an ordinance, I do want this in writing. You know, I want this to be official direction in an ordinance form from the council that staff can work with, and then we can go into our one-year, you know, test program. So I think I'm looking for a consensus, and then I'll get to you just in a second, Roy.
Got a question.
Go ahead.
How long is it going to take to write this ordinance? Because if a resident wants to put in a patio this year, UNILAC has a product out there that's a $1,500 credit if you sign by July 31st.
John, given everything that we've discussed here tonight, do you think it's possible to have it back at the next committee in two weeks? Should be a fairly wide ordinance for a first round.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think we could probably do that pretty readily. Just so I understand, would we want to, in the R1, 2, and 3 districts, keep impervious lot coverage at 35% and allow an additional 5% if you use a pervious product? Do you want to restrict it to just pavers or a pervious product?
I know at least, at least one council member wants to see pavers. I'm not sure, I have an opinion yet, and I think that the mayor is right, we've got a lengthy agenda tonight. I'd like to pick that discussion up when we see what the ordinance is before us. That'll give us all a couple of weeks to absorb the information given here tonight, do any research on our own, and I don't see a problem with, at that point, if that's the only, you know, contingency, making a decision whether it's poured or pavers and going right to council for final approval, if that's okay. I really don't want to get into that discussion tonight, because we haven't thought about it yet individually. Mr. Forrest, and then?
Yes, Mr. Clicker just made a comment to me that if we incorporate this into the UDO, it may be faster to get it going, because if we want to do it as a text amendment, we would probably have to go back and go through the whole process. I don't, maybe Mr. Mayor might want to comment on that.
I believe Mr. Clicker is correct.
And we're not going to finish the UDO tonight, so we're going to be picking that up anyway, so I don't think this is going to slow the process down. Alderman Lewitin?
John Forrest, I just have one question. You made the comment that if the council approves and the ordinance goes into effect, that somebody can increase their lot coverage by 5%. Can they substitute one area for another? Can they change their driveway to pervious and then use the patio as impervious? Or must the new addition be impervious? I just want to clarify, that's all.
Again, my initial purpose in bringing this forward was to address existing structures where people already have their concrete driveway or their asphalt driveway. The house is there, the garage is there, but they want to put a patio or a shed. That's probably 90% of the requests we get are for those type of structures that we have to turn down. I think if we restrict the use of this pervious material, at least initially, to see how it holds out, to either a rear yard or a side yard, and specifically for a sidewalk or a patio, or, you know...
I understand, I want to repeat what I hear is your answer to see if I understand what you said. It must be for the addition. He can't say, "I'm coming in, I want to redo my driveway and create 5% that he can put impervious in the backyard." Is that correct, that I understand that?
I think initially, yes, you're correct. You know, what we're trying to do is solve, you know, a problem that several residents experience all the time. I think we could encourage somebody to put in a pervious driveway, just as good stormwater management practice, but I don't think necessarily they should get additional impervious lot coverage for doing that. Because then pretty soon, we're going to, as Alderman Police said earlier, you're going to have a builder come in and put in a whole pervious driveway, which again is good stormwater management practice, but then he's going to want to put in a huge, impervious concrete patio in the backyard, which could cause sheet flow and other types of flooding issues for the neighbors.
I'm fine with it, just the ordinance should specify that decision.
Did Alderman Coles have his hand up?
Oh.
Okay, and Alderman Shockey was next.
Yeah, just to make sure, now, we're talking about getting this into the unified code, so we can do it quickly. Can we also then put in something about that backyard flooding that used to be there but disappeared somehow, so people don't come in and bother or call every time their backyard floods? That the water be gone within 72 hours, it's not a problem, something?
Yes. Yeah, what Alderman Shockey is referring to is, years ago, and I couldn't remember if it was in the stormwater management ordinance or in the building code, as I recall, the sentence was, "Standing water for less than 72 hours is not considered a nuisance." That's had been taken out of the code at some point. I don't know if that was done by council action, or if that was done by a mistake by the codifier, or the city attorney, or how that came out. I don't recall.
Let's pick that discussion up during the UDO debate. And Alderman, Alderman Police?
Real quick, John, you mentioned the best management practice. I think a couple of months ago, we passed with the Page Water Commission, best management practices to, for runoff, and there was fees in lieu of. This might be one place where, instead of the fee in lieu of, they put in the drive, the impervious driveway.
Could solve a lot of issues.
Okay, I'm looking for consensus to direct staff to come back to us in two weeks with a, with a draft ordinance, taking into consideration what we've discussed here tonight, and then specifically, we will pick up the debate as the council wishes, after some additional homework and maybe presentation by staff, as to whether block or poured, if one has a larger negative impact over the other. See some statistics perhaps. I think I have a second, although I wasn't looking to make it a motion. All those in favor of doing this?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, if in fact there's a motion. Staff, you know what to do. Next item is what I thought was going to be the long item on tonight's agenda, is a report and recommendation, or actually discussion and review of chapters, what's left of 6 and all of 7, on the proposed Unified Development Ordinance. I think, because we have so much on the agenda tonight, let's cap this discussion off at 45 minutes, unless anybody thinks it should be even shorter than that. I have a half hour, I would say 45 minutes, Eugene?
I don't care.
He doesn't care. Alderman Police, come on, guys. Just a half hour, then, let's just do it. All right. I reviewed where we were and looked at all my little sticky, so I know where I want to pick up. So let's start with page 6-5, please.
6-5, I thought we were past that.
Section A, subsection 1, sub-subsection little E, "No accessory structure or use except fences shall be constructed, occupied, or established on any public utility, drainage, or pipeline easement, except when written permission of the city and all utility companies having rights to use the easement." We have this all over town. We made it very clear in the early discussions that we're going to grandfather residential situations that are existing non-conforming. You know, garage too close to a lot line, beyond the 35% lot coverage or whatever, if it's existing. This I see as detrimental to, you know, to other properties. We know we've got sheds in town, raised planting beds, whatever, in what was originally intended to be drainage swales in backyards. Now, I don't know if we have a legal leg to stand on, but somewhere along the way, this council really needs to, you know, figure out what we're going to do and how we're going to begin to resolve this problem that is happening all over town. Mr. Clicker, do you have any historical precedent that you can bring before us as to how something like this may have been handled in another community? If you don't, that's fine, I'll ask for you that, I'll ask for that at a future meeting, but I think something needs to be done. And the fact that we're rewriting this paragraph in, essentially almost copying it from what we had before, and we've never enforced it, something is wrong. We can write all we want, but if we don't enforce our own rules, it doesn't matter.
Yes. This is language that I'm actually very familiar with. In a previous community I worked for in Hoffman Estates had this exact language. In several instances, accessory structure setbacks are not as big or required to be as big as utility and drainage easements. What this allowed the community to do, allowed the homeowner to do, allowed the utility companies to do, was to basically protect their assets in there. In a case of a shed or something, if it were, if, say, the setback were, if the shed could by the setback be 5 foot into a utility easement, the, before the permit could be issued, the property owner would have to get, sign off letters from all the utility companies and the city, saying that it could be there. It's, it is another hoop that the homeowner has to go through, but then everybody is protected down the line, saying that we know that this structure is there. Because what I have seen personally in cases where structures are in utility easements, where the company, where the utility companies were unaware of them, or did not authorize them, they'll come do, through, do some maintenance work, move the shed, or tear apart the shed, and say to the homeowner, "Thank you very much, but there's nothing we're going to do about it." In my opinion, that's what this is to do, is to actually make the utility companies address those issues before they become issues.
Okay, that's fine, but I still think, and I don't want to discuss it any longer here tonight, but on an agenda at some point in the future, I am going to want to discuss what, you know, the council wishes are as a whole, as to how we're going to deal with this existing condition. Not necessarily in a utility easement, because as you say, there's only going to be an issue when maintenance work or additional utilities have to be pulled. I'm talking about our drainage swales.
We, again, experience that I've had in other communities is that it's a case-by-case basis, not necessarily that we're going to go out and, if the ordinance is passed, or if this language is in there, that we're going to go out and canvass the town and tell everybody that's got a shed in a drainage easement that it needs to go, but if we get a complaint about drainage, and we notice that there is a shed in there, it will need to be relocated.
Okay, I accept that for an answer for this evening. My next comment is on page 614. Does anybody have one on a lower page number than that? Mr. Mayor?
65, item F, "No accessory structure shall be located in a floodplain." What's the amortization time period on this? I mean, we have houses in the floodplain, but let alone garages and a lot of other structures.
Right. As we have discussed with our legal nonconforming, we were going to be adding that residential was exempt from this nonconformity for accessory structures also.
And for how long of a time period? Forever, or?
It was discussed at our last meeting on the 20th, that it would be just an outright exemption for residential.
So then, do you need F?
So, then do you need F?
Again, it's for new construction.
For new construction, right. Okay. Anything else before page 614? Okay, then on page 614, under performance standards of home-based businesses, section B, number 2, signs. Except for a two-square-foot nameplate, no sign on the structure shall advertise the presence or conduct of a home-based business. Where can this sign be located? On the structure only, in the front yard, in the parkway, only on the private property? I think there needs to be some language in here, very specifically stating where the sign can be, how tall this two-foot sign can be, whether or not it can be lighted, which I think it should not be personally. So, I don't know if this is, once again, rather than inventing the wheel, if this is something you can find from another municipality who deals with this, who may have a lot of home-based businesses. But I think it should be, I think it should be specified. My next comment is on 617 and it is a visual faux pas, faux pas, I think. The drawing that indicates what H is, height, we talked about this several times and this draft still shows it as wrong. I think H should be to the top of the ridge line, at the very top of the structure, not to the top of the second floor. This is reoccurring, so I will skip every place that I've noted it as reoccurring. However, on 620, once again, under vertical standards, now because we have one less letter, we've changed H to G. Do you think it would make sense to try to keep those nomenclatures consistent? Okay? Anybody have anything up to this point, up to 620? Mr. Mayor?
Oh, just following what the chairman said. If the maximum height is 30 and you're gonna go to the top of the ridge line, would all the homes in Woodside be conforming? Can you build that kinda style home in Wooddale again?
Yes, our current zoning ordinance allows 30-foot maximum height. Where we measure that or where we start that measurement is six inches below top of foundation at the front of the structure.
So, those Normandy-style roofs, that's all?
That's all been calculated.
That'll be 30 feet?
There have been a couple of instances where we've checked them on site. They check out. On occasion, we've had to make a builder reduce that height, but, yes.
All right, my next one is, well, there's several in the next few pages, but they're all the same thing. They're all about H versus G and the actual height versus the top of the top floor. Page 633, under tree replacement. So, it's on 633, section K. The, there's a list of, well, here, I'll just read it. Except that when a tree designated for removal is one of the following species, each such tree shall be replaced with one replacement tree, and on and on. It gives you a list of trees that are considered garbage trees, weed trees, junk trees, whatever you wanna call it. There's one in here in particular, this city has a lot of, and if we allow everybody to cut them all down who so pleases, I think it could make a big negative impact for a lot of reasons, and it saves Siberian elm. I wonder if we can get a, an official opinion from, you know, an arborist. I know most arborists do consider these weed trees, but we have so many very mature, 60, 70-foot-plus-tall Siberian elms. I think, you know, only because it makes up such a large portion of our forest, should be looked at. So, I'd like to get it off the list. Anybody have anything up to 633? All right, 634. Failure to comply, still talking about removal of trees now in this case, in an illegal manner. I'd like to see something in here, and this is probably another place where John Kramer can help, with, in terms of failure to comply, the, the, fine, the fee should be relative to the species and size of the tree. There is such a list, I don't know if that's an ISO list or where this exists, but it does exist and I have talked about it with Mr. Kramer in the past. So, I'd like you to discuss that with John and see what exactly that is and if we can perhaps just reference it, I think that is a, it's not a static list, it's a dynamic list. I think it's probably reworked every few years and tree values reassessed accordingly. Mr. Mayor?
Chairman's going a lot quicker than I am. I'm back on 627. The five-story lodging building. Our intent for the Thorndale Corridor, I know under O'Hare rules and regulations, we can go up to 15 stories. Is the intent here that that would be done with variance and also with things like in our central business district with the new Wooddale station development? I think that's six.
Correct.
Is that permitted or...?
Excuse me. In the town center, or the Thorndale Corridor district, that zoning is being developed as we speak. Actually, the FAA regulations are closer to 22 stories. When we get closer to Wooddale Road, at Route 83, they're approximately 15. We are looking at the zoning for that. We're not proposing to bring anything to the, for the Thorndale Corridor zoning that says 22 stories is permitted by right, but we are taking that into consideration for that district in particular.
So, would not be permitted under the current UDO, they'd have to come in for a variance, I presume?
In the downtown district, if they didn't...
Actually, I was referring to the Thorndale Corridor, sorry.
The Thorndale Corridor, the zoning that's up there right now is industrial zoning. If somebody were to come in for a...
Let me clarify, after the UDO is passed, they would have to come in for a variance for what we have planned on the Thorndale Corridor.
Actually, we've, as Russ said, we've been working with Lakota on, the Thorndale Corridor is actually gonna have, for lack of a better term, its own zoning chapter, specific to development of the Thorndale Corridor and the corporate Main Street. It can either be added at some point to the UDO as a standalone chapter or it'll be a standalone document, but that will have different development standards.
Alderman Coles had his hand up next?
Oh, I didn't have that.
I thought you did, sorry. Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
Why would you not put, so Thorndale Corridor is gonna be a rezone or whatever we decide and not put in this UDO right now?
Currently, as you'll recall, the UDO process started before we began work on the Thorndale Corridor and the Thorndale Corridor work is progressing much faster than we anticipate.
But why would we not, before we pass this, why would we not have that in place, adopt the whole thing at once? Why go back and reopen it and rezone? I just don't understand it. We were gonna pass something here and then we're going, come back and revisit it and add it more. I mean, why can't we get that all together? If you're working with the Coda Group, we should have that all piecemeal together already. I mean, I just don't understand that.
Let me try that one. I mean, like Russ said, I think we're probably easily six months behind where we, at least where we thought we were gonna be with the UDO. And we're probably three months or more ahead of where we thought we were gonna be with Lakota. So, we knew there was gonna be a gap and we didn't wanna hold up the UDO for the Thorndale Corridor. That was the original intent and I remember the discussion among the whole council. But the gap is closing, so they may end up happening at the same time, they may not. I'm still concerned, even if it's only a month or two disparity between the two, I'm personally still not interested in holding off this UDO any longer. I mean, we were pushing our ZBA Plan Commission to try to get through it as fast as they could and I'd hate to hold this up now for what is essentially a standalone zoning area and a standalone chapter.
Well, I'm not saying hold it up. I'm just saying is if we, three months with the Coda Group, how much longer is it gonna do to the Coda Group and put in here? I mean, what were you talking? I mean, tell me your time span. I mean, I don't wanna hold this up either, but I mean, what are we looking at? We're three months ahead of that program, so, I mean, what's...
We anticipate a discussion with the council in June with the Lakota Group, Duncan and Associates, which is their zoning associate that they brought in, and Trans Systems to bring it together, bring forward multiple issues that we've been working on with that. Based on that discussion, the draft zoning could be, theoretically could be ready in July.
Along with this? Well, I mean, if you look at, it's already, you know, you look at a month, so...
You're right, we may be there, but I'm just saying if we're not, I don't think we should hold one up, but I think that's a good question. All right, my next one is on 6-39. Does anybody have something on a lower page number than that? While you guys are looking, I'll run this one by staff. 639 talks about parking lot standards and in particular landscaping, parking lot islands. What I don't think I saw addressed in here is when and where will, you know, each parking lot tree placement plan type be required? How big of a parking lot before we mandate this and to what level of reconstructive a parking lot or remodel of the primary facility structure or change of use? When does this happen?
Again, this is new development, so that would be determined as...